The Plymouth Township Planning Commission meeting will come to order at 7:00. If Secretary please call roll.
Kendra Barberina is here, Dennis Sabolski.
Here.
Bob Ostendorf.
Here.
Dan Itzel.
Here.
Bob Dorshavitz.
Here.
Keith Postel.
Here.
Bill Pratt.
Here.
Thank you. And we have the approval of this evening's agenda. I have no additions or corrections.
Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the minutes as submitted. I'm sorry, the agenda as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. And do we have a motion to approve the minutes of our April 21st meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Ostendorf in support of Commissioner Pratt to approve the minutes of April 21st as submitted. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Dennis, excuse me a second. Have we had a meeting since these new mics have been put in? Let me just tell you real quick. So if you look at the mic, push the button in the middle and red is on. But they're, the direction, they come in a Y direction, but if you're not talking, you want to turn it off because they're so sensitive that it can pick up like rustling of papers and things like that. So just remember, red is on. Don't ask me why.
Thanks, Ben. Thank you. And this is the part of the agenda where we have a public comment. The meeting is open to anyone that wishes to make a comment on a non-agenda item. And if there's such a person out there in our Zoom capability, if you would raise your hand and be recognized. Nobody there. Okay, no one there. Yeah, we'll move on. There's someone.
Antonio Vel.
Okay, Antonio, you're on. We supposedly can hear you. What's your question or comment?
I do want to thank you for having us and we appreciate with the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, he's done. I take it. All right, under new business then, we have application 2393-0421, the Frito-Lay building expansion. And Ms. Hall, I understand they're here on a Zoom call.
Yes, the applicant would be, they're out of state, so they will be.
Do we know, are they connected to us? Are they there?
Yes.
Yes, good evening. This is Kevin Crump. I'm with Taskful Architects and Engineers and here to represent the Frito-Lay building expansion. Happy to respond and comment to any of your questions or concerns.
Okay, we'll ask Ms. Hall, our planner, to read her report and the engineering report. And then we'll call on you for any presentation or comments you may have.
Very good.
So, I'm sorry, your comment to your report, please.
Thank you, Chairman Sabolski. Good evening, planning commissioners. The application before you is for an expansion to an existing facility in the industrial park. And the expansion is approximately just over twice the size of the existing building. It's almost 40,000 square feet of expansion. The use is consistent with the industrial district and the dimensional standards are met. And two trees will be removed as part of this project, so we note that replacement will be required. Although, since it's only two trees, it's minimal impact and we feel that that can be handled administratively. And a majority of the expansion will consist of additional truck wells. There will be 11 on the south facade of the addition. And we note that a truck turning radius plan is recommended to be submitted for administrative review. It appears that there is sufficient room on the site and this would just demonstrate. As far as parking, with just over 200 parking spaces, a minimum of seven barrier-free spaces are required. Four are currently there today. We anticipate that this was just a result of when the facility was initially constructed. And recommending that three additional barrier-free spaces are added, which there is sufficient room for. The addition will mirror the existing building materials, insulated metal panels. And there will be four additional windows near the roof line on the facade. We do know that there's a minor discrepancy on sheet A 201 regarding the stairs. Just shown in the elevations, but we do not think this impacts the final footprint of the building. And then if there will be building-mounted lighting, we would need to know the specifics of those. But other than those minor comments, this addition is in compliance with the zoning district and standards. And we recommend the planning commission consider final site plan approval with those underlying items to be addressed administratively.
Thank you. And our engineering reports?
So from an engineering perspective, since this is an existing building, there's already utilities available to service the facility. There is a proposed fire suppression line on site to service two hydrants and no other changes to the water main on site. There are no proposed upgrades to the sanitary sewer system as of now, but we will require CCTV inspection of the existing sanitary sewer pipes to confirm that they're in good enough condition to be reused. Otherwise, we will require replacement of the lead. And then for the storm sewer, there's no additional impervious area being proposed on site. But we will also still require confirmation from Wayne County if any additional detention capacity is required or pre-treatment will be required. And then we also recommended, from an engineering perspective, approval of the final site plan.
Okay, thank you. And the applicants received a communication from the fire department with some comments that, to the proposal, that need to be addressed. So with that, the applicant is here. Do you have any comments to make?
Yes, thank you to the commission for hearing our application. Again, this is Kevin Crump. I'm the chief civil engineer with Taskful Architects and Engineers. No general additional questions or comments, other than what's already been reported by the township staff. But I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So just to be clear, you intend to work with the staff here and bring into compliance the underlying comments that she had in her report. Am I correct?
Absolutely. We will satisfy and respond to any comments that come from, you know, various jurisdictions, whether it's the fire department or the township and Wayne County.
Okay. So with that, the commissioners have any questions or comments?
I have a question. In the renderings, it shows a brick and some kind of paneling as far as your exterior. Can you explain what that current is and how that will mirror in what you're doing in the future?
I'm going to defer that to our architect, Antonio Valdivia. Antonio?
Hello, friend. Yes, the existing facility has some CMU at the bottom part and metal panels siding on the upper part. We are proposing a pre-engineered metal building with IMP siding all around to have a better thermal seal around the building. So that's why we are not intending to bring that CMU at the bottom of the street right now.
That brick is a modular-type brick?
Yes, it's CMU.
Any other questions or comments? Are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, recommend approval of the final site plan review for application 2393-0421. And with the stipulation that the May 13th letter from McKenna, all the underlying items are taken care of and that the engineering review is only preliminary and subject to final review when all the items are taken care of.
And the fire department. And the fire department.
And the fire department is called.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, move by Commissioner Postel and supported by Commissioner Pratt to grant tentative and final site plan approval to application 2393-0421. Subject to said conditions. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations and good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay, good luck. Under old business, we have application 2346-0919, the restoration of the Phoenix Mill. The project revised. Ms. Hall, your report.
Thank you. As you recall, the commission has reviewed this project several times in 2020. At that time, the proposal was for an event space and restaurant, a full-service restaurant. The applicant has revised that plan to use the building now, the second floor, the top floor, as professional office space for a landscape architecture company and to use the bottom space still as an event banquet space. Majority of the site plan conditions have not changed since the use of professional office space is in the same commercial category as a restaurant use. However, there are a couple items still outstanding. The first would be recommendation to add striping on the bridge that runs to the parking lot on the west side of the creek. We do anticipate that there will be some pedestrian traffic from that parking lot to the site. Directly across from that parking lot that fronts on Edward Hines, there is a guardrail and we recommend that a pass-through be provided with Wayne County approval to better facilitate safe crossing of pedestrians. And we also recommend that a sidewalk be constructed along Northville Road. And we have discussed this with the fire department and they also recommend a set of stairs running down from Northville Road to the building. That will be their primary access point from Northville Road with the fire truck to enter the building should they need emergency access. In terms of landscaping, we do recommend that some additional landscaping overall be added to the site, particularly along the existing parking lot on Edward Hines Drive. And we note that the applicant is proposing some banked parking and there are several trees proposed in that area. We just recommend that they would be outside of that potential parking area so that in the future, those trees would not need to be removed. And recommending some areas of the parking lot that are not intended for trash or service pickup to be landscaped instead of just striped pavement. While the applicant meets the required number of parking spaces for the two uses, we do recommend that the parking lot along Edward Hines be repaved and restriped with at least one barrier-free space as a benefit to the community as part of this project. And a number of modifications have been made inside the building to date and restoration of the exterior. A glass atrium is also proposed in the northwest corner of the building to improve access. And we just recommend that revised elevations be provided to the commission. And then any new lighting will also need a photometric plan. And we have a recommendation that the applicant consider a state historic marker for this property as part of the community benefit. So provided that the building design and some of the landscaping is addressed to the satisfaction of the commission, we do recommend final site plan approval with those other items to be handled administratively. Thank you.
Thank you. And the engineering report, please?
So this site, similar to the previous one, is also an existing building. So utilities are already available on site. So there's no changes proposed to the existing water main on site, but there are existing utilities that traverse the site we will require easements for because the township currently doesn't have any easements for access to those utilities, which includes water main and sanitary sewer. There's also currently no proposed changes to the sanitary sewer on site. And similar to the previous project, we will also require CCTV inspection of the sanitary sewer lead to make sure that it's in good condition for reuse. Otherwise, replacement will be required. And then in terms of storm sewer, there's proposed underdrains and swales on site, which is significantly different from the previously submitted site plan where there was additional storm drainage and storm drainage proposed. So our understanding is that this has been submitted to Wayne County for review and approval as there's no additional impervious area on the site. And they have gotten some correspondence from the county confirming that no storm drainage changes will be required to the site. But we will also require confirmation that no additional pre-treatment will be required from the county and that the existing combined sewer system will not require changes from the county as well. So in terms of engineering review, we recommend final approval as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the applicants received a communication from the fire department. They found no deficiencies from a public safety perspective. And the applicant is here. He come up. I think you might have to bring the mic up. I'm not sure what kind of mic you have there. Or is it?
Does that work?
Yeah, I think. I can hear you.
Yes. Nice to be back. Thank you for having me. Are there any questions?
Well, did you have any comments or issues with what Ms. Hall or the engineer has had to say?
I think pretty consistent with some of the comments that we saw last time and that we are working towards. I think we dramatically changed our site plan based on the change in tenant. You know, unfortunately with COVID, the restaurant tenant pulled out, so we had to fill that space upstairs. Most of the space upstairs, some upstairs space will still be available. So I think that fulfills our desire of cycling a lot of people in and out of this building in the upstairs and downstairs space through the banquet event space. So with the change, it resolved our parking issue, which was the biggest issue when we presented this the last time. So we have adequate parking on site now. And we have identified a couple spaces that would be available in the future to expand that parking. From the comment, I just wanted to address the comment about, you know, potentially more landscaping on site. Just to kind of put this project in perspective for the people that aren't aware, you know, this was a county road yard for 70 years. Most of this site was hard surface, is hard surface. So we're removing 38,000 square feet of asphalt, converting it to green space. And no trees are going to be removed. And we're adding 34 deciduous canopy trees, 34 upright evergreens, and 1,215 square feet of ornamental grasses and perennial beds are proposed. So I think we're adding a significant amount of properly-done vegetation back to this space. We did work with Wayne County Parks. Our initial proposal, in addition to having not as much parking, we had a very elaborate landscaped area. And our feedback from Wayne County Parks was that they didn't like it. It didn't fit with the rest of Hines Park. And it did not match everybody's goal of having a sustainable landscaped area. So a lot of mowing, a lot of watering. So when we redid the site plan, a lot of focus was put on, you know, trying to seed the majority of the 38,000 square feet of asphalt that we remove and turn into green space with, you know, native meadow mix. So it blends more into the existing Hines Park areas. And that was what our initial goal was, was to ensure that, you know, people have access to this site and they can enjoy the area, just like they would go out to all the different parks along Hines Drive. That's the, yeah, that was the Wayne County all asphalt version.
So where are you with the entrance feature, the atrium area that you were going to?
Yes, the entrance feature will be to the top corner there. You see a small room, yes, right in front of that. So in order to address ADA concerns of the building and to have accessibility for all, we put an elevator, we're putting an elevator in this building. So that elevator needed an entrance. We needed to do the elevator in a way that didn't take away from the historic, the historic building. So we decided on the entry atrium as a way to bring people in. And then the elevator would be in that small room, that small bump out that you saw there, which was just a previous exterior accessed-only storage room. So not very, not very, let's say, historically neat.
Sorry, I keep losing this spot here. The Google Earth keeps blacking out on me. Let me try it this way. So I remember seeing a rendering or a model of it at a meeting that we've had over the last few years or so. So I can't remember now if the commission has seen that, but do you have one available or?
I, that's a great picture of what it started with.
Yes.
I did not bring a printout of that. I can get that to the commission to review. It is the same concept as before. The only change to it was from a glass roof. We decided to go with a traditional rubber roof. And part of that, again, from a sustainability standpoint, although we thought it might be neat to have the light coming in. But the heating and cooling would be significant in that space and kind of take away from our vision of having a sustainable development within the park space. So we did change the roof, instead of a glass roof, to a rubber roof with better insulation. But it still has all glass panels on the side. We feel it doesn't try to replicate the original building, which historic folks don't want you to try to replicate it, but it has enough features that pay homage to the original building.
Yeah, if you could email that to Ms. Hall and then she can share it with the commissioners. If you do get approval today, then I would ask the commissioners if they're okay just to send their comments to Ms. Hall and make sure they're all on board with that rendering. Just curious, so, you know, I know you, and maybe you kind of touched on it a little bit in your remarks, but I know when the building was purchased from Wayne County, they wanted it to be tied in somehow to the park. And I did see from the site plan, you're having sort of a service station kind of an approach for bicycles. So how did they, they were, did you get to have, did you have to receive approval from Wayne County to now have the landscape firm in there?
We did receive approval from Wayne County for that. We did let them know a change of tenant specifically. However, it doesn't change one of the key features of the site, which is being open. So, you know, this for 70 years was fenced off as a county building. You couldn't walk on the property. So when we take the fence down, then that means that everybody can walk onto the property, whether they're visiting a business within the building or not and enjoy the park space.
Just the fence?
Yeah, that is the fence. That's the, you're not authorized to go in there sign. So that fence comes down, that sign comes down. And then you heard the comment about maybe striping alongside one side of the bridge for, you know, pedestrians walk this side. We did propose a sign that says, you know, pedestrians, you know, cars yield to pedestrians. And, but that was the feedback. All those racks, I believe, are gone. I think Wayne County picked up most of those and took those away before they closed on the sale.
So where's the sidewalk?
So currently, the sidewalk is on the other side. So, you know, one of the things that we've discussed with Wayne County Parks and the planning commission here is that we know there's no good way to get from this highly-used trail across basically 5 Mile. And what people do is they just, they go around the barrier and they go along the road, so there's no good way. So what we said was we would be very open to working with Wayne County. If they were to cut that and to provide, you know, a hawk signal or a crosswalk to get to our property, then that would allow people to get onto our site. The way that most pedestrians go on the sidewalk, they will cross up at that intersection up there, which is Northville Road and Hines. There's no crosswalk, there's no signal. It's pretty dangerous. So we've asked Wayne County, let's do a traffic study so that we could potentially do something with that intersection. But when pedestrians like those go across the street, there's nowhere for them to go because it's all pavement. What they do is they all go across the street and then they walk along Phoenix Lake in just a walked-down trail. No sidewalk, no pavement, which obviously from an accessibility standpoint presents some challenges. So, you know, what we said was if we were to work with Wayne County and have Wayne County give us the bypass lane section in front of the building, that would allow us the space to put a sidewalk. If that happens, we would commit to putting a sidewalk in front of our building and with the potential of eventually connecting it to a crosswalk at the light at 5 Mile and Northville Road.
So the sidewalk would go this way to the front of the building or this way?
Yeah, no, no, the other way, the first way.
Yeah.
Along there.
And that's where you would have the stairs leading down to the building itself that the fire department's looking for?
That would be the area. So our initial conversation with the fire chief was based on the, where they would park. And, you know, the initial feedback we had was they were fine with not having the sidewalk or the stairs. So I think there's some discussion that I would like to have with the fire chief to really understand what is necessary. Certainly from a life safety standpoint, we would comply with whatever we need to comply with. But, you know, he had mentioned no, Fire Chief Phillips mentioned no, no need to do anything with the bridge. His fire truck can go over the bridge. It's wide enough. So that initially, there was no, that concern wasn't relayed to us. But that would be the area, in that area, where we would do a stair step down.
Right about here?
Yeah, right about there. That's correct. So you can see the constraint we have here. There is no, there's really, there's no section of property in front of the building currently that you could put a sidewalk safely. So there is a bypass lane that really starts right at the intersection back at Hines and Northville. It starts there. And the only reason that that's there is really for people to race around, stop traffic at the stoplight, which nobody wants that to happen anyway because there is a signaled left-turn light. So there's a left-turn lane, a straight lane, and then the bypass lane. That bypass lane goes past the senior center and then it ends. So what we would propose with Wayne County is if we start the bypass lane, if you need one, farther down, that would allow us to potentially put that first lane as green space, put a sidewalk, run it across the front of the building and connect to, across Northville Road. That was, but again, I can't, I can't promise that because that is so dependent upon Wayne County really working on their end to do that. And that was never part of our original agreement with Wayne County for the purchase agreement. That was something that we said, we really think we can help the community here enjoy this area and have safer access across the site. But it's not shown on our current site plan.
So if I remember, are you done, Bob, with your comment?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
You are. So if I remember when there was going to be a restaurant up there and then the event space, you know, on the lower level. So it's, I presume now it's going to be catered. And is there a kitchen facility there? Or they just bring the food in? How's that operation going to work?
Yeah, good question. So the banquet tenant had always anticipated catering and food. So there was never an agreement worked out with the upstairs and downstairs. It could have been, but it was always planned to be catered. So there's no change in the banquet tenant's business plan for that. They do not plan to cook on site. They plan to have warming, you know, a prep kitchen, warming ovens and tables for the catered food to come in prior to being served.
I have a question. So your landscape, is a general landscape firm that you're?
So your landscape, is a general landscape firm that you're?
It's a, it's a landscape architect firm. They've been around for about 50 years. I think it's a great win for Plymouth Township to have them in our community.
So do they?
I'm stealing them from one Wayne County Township to another, but.
Do they have a fleet of vehicles and do they have equipment?
No, 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 they're, they're all architects, so all degreed professionals. So a lot of good professional architects. But they don't actually physically do landscaping work. They just do all the design work. They designed a number of parks. They designed the downtown Northville, if you're familiar with, off the city center. There's a whole kind of park space, they did that design.
How soon do the, in an ideal world, would they want to be in there?
Ideal world, they would be in there on July 1st.
Oh. So you're that far along with your renovations that you might accommodate that?
So most of the renovations inside were simply maintenance or kind of, let's say, cleanup work. As the banquet space and even the upstairs space, really, we put an emphasis on simply restoring it back to, back to its historic nature, so.
What about your floors, are you polished concrete?
Yeah, so the, the lower level banquet space will have a polished concrete floor. And then the upper space has the original 100-year-old white maple flooring. So we're keeping that, we're cleaning it and restoring it. I think, to be honest, I think having the restaurant back out really helped in the short term, certainly to help preserve a lot of that building. You know, having the restaurant, I, I still would like it. I think it's a great, would be a great magnet for that area. It'd be a great destination restaurant. However, you'd have to deal with grease traps and you'd have to deal with makeup air and more holes in the building. And you have this wood floor with grease and wine and fat. It would have been, so it would have stressed, let's say, the historic building a little too much, I think.
And do you have any tenant or prospective tenants for the basement yet?
Yeah, yeah, the banquet space tenant, she's continued to be engaged this whole time. So she would like to open in July. I think the priority would be to get our landscape architects in. And then, and then probably at the end of the summer, maybe August timeframe, August, September.
Do they plan to apply for liquor license in the basement?
I think that, I think she is planning, yes. If she hasn't already, I have to check.
So how many employees are in the landscape firm?
I believe there's, I believe there's 22, 20 or 22.
And the banquet facility, what's the maximum occupancy?
Don't have that in front of me. Approximately 200 people.
So Laura, he meets all the parking requirements?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Does the, your two prospective tenants, you were saying that the upstairs, they don't plan on using the entire space?
There's a section upstairs, approximately 400 square feet that the upstairs tenant is not going to use. So we would anticipate, and the banquet tenant has expressed interest in taking that space as well because she's received a lot of interest from people, as you can imagine, as things start to open up around here for banquets and missed, missed events. So we think that would be a great opportunity. That has the white maple flooring in it as well. So you would still be able to experience the upstairs space if you're a guest as well.
Do you intend to seek a state historical marker?
Yeah, absolutely. That was something we committed to with Wayne County in the purchase agreement, so absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve a final site plan with the items shown in McKenna report and the engineer to be administratively approved and taken care of.
Support.
Move by Commissioner Pratt in support of Commissioner Barberina to approve the final site plan for application 20, subject to set conditions for application 2346-0919. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck to you. You've done a beautiful job so far. I'm sure you're going to have a successful conclusion to your efforts. Okay, moving on to application 2380-1220, Plymouth Oaks Park Development. Ms. Howell, your report.
Thank you. And as you recall, the planning commission did grant tentative site plan approval at the February meeting with conditions to be completed before final. This is for a new industrial office building on the last unbuilt development site within the Plymouth Oaks Business Park, which also borders along Sheldon Road. You'll see from our site plan review that we find the proposal is in full compliance with the ordinance. Dimensionally, all the standards are met. They have provided the correct number of replacement trees. From the tentative site plan, the applicant has adjusted the building design slightly. There was a color render provided in your packet. They will be wrapping the building with the colored concrete block and have removed the use of the limestone and just added more brick so that there's more consistency with the materials. They have also screened the rooftop equipment and will be using shared, the dumpster to the east, which is also owned by the property owner. And will be replacing the dumpster gates that are currently damaged. And they have submitted a photometric plan that is in compliance. Originally, there were five parking lot lights proposed with one light being closest to Sheldon Road. We recommended that that would be, that fifth light be removed and changed to building mounted lighting as the elevation to Sheldon Road would make it very noticeable and increase glare. So that has been adjusted. And based on the compliance, we recommend final site plan approval with no conditions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the engineer report?
So from the original site plan that was proposed, we had recommended final approval from an engineering standpoint at the time. So just to re-review what we had discussed at the time. So there's an existing water main on the north side of Plymouth Oaks Boulevard. And the proposed building will have a two-inch lead connection to it. And we would require additional connection details during the engineering review for this. For the sanitary sewer, there's already a eight-inch sanitary sewer on the south side of Plymouth Oaks Boulevard. And the plan just indicates a six-inch connection for their building. And then the storm sewers indicate onsite stormwater to discharge to existing catch basins north of the property. And that will, all the stormwater will eventually go to a regional detention basin. In terms of site paving, the site is accessed by a drive approach to, connected to the south side of Plymouth Oaks Boulevard. And we had recommended at the time a rate, fire truck and turning and radius plan. I believe that has been provided since and there are no issues with that as well. We will also require an ingress egress access agreement between the neighboring lot 19. And that, those details will be finalized during engineering review. So our recommendation for final review approval stands.
Okay, and the applicants received a communication from the fire department. Look, yeah, it looks like they've, there aren't really any issues, but they can review that. Any applicants here?
Good evening.
Good evening. Did you have any comments on the two reports or the fire department?
We were all room and we're going to comply with all the requests.
So you'll comply with the, most of the engineer, all right? Any questions or comments from the commission?
I have one, the sidewalk we're putting in, is that connected to anything?
No, we got approval not to put the sidewalk in.
Okay, so you're not putting the sidewalk in?
That, that was addressed at an earlier meeting. You might have missed, you might have missed that meeting. Any other comments or questions?
I, I believe the applicant has provided some building material samples that the commission is interested in looking at them.
Do you want to see it?
Yes, please, thank you.
You don't have to bring the brick up here. We won't pass, we won't pass the brick around.
No, just those. Thank you.
Okay. There's no rooftop equipment?
Yes, there will be rooftop equipment here. It's all going to be shielded.
So let me. So the lighter, I was in a discussion here, so the lighter materials, you know, you're rendering. So do you have that there or those are the only two colors? Is that the big block? Okay.
Is your loading area all in grade level or is there any color? Your loading area? You have any, are you selling it, pitching it right now?
I'm sorry?
Are you pitching the property yet? It's already?
And they require you to build something within a certain amount?
They, they are the condition, they want you to start building within a year, which is open to pass property for a little bit.
Yeah, it is. Any comments on the building materials?
Good to me.
Yep, me too.
But, so Laura, so discussing with Commissioner Barberina, I am a little confused. So item six of your report on page two.
Yes.
About this sidewalk that the applicant proposes a five-foot wide sidewalk along the northern facade of the building, I thought, is that true?
It's on the front of the building?
Yes, this is the area that's directly in front of the doors in the parking lot.
Okay.
So, so there, there's a bit of sidewalk space before the curb and then going into the parking lot.
So item two, hang on. All right.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And that spans the entire building front edge.
Right, right, okay, got it.
That's what he's talking about.
Yeah. Any comments, any more comments or questions, concerns?
Laura, you say the walk essentially wraps around three sides of the building with the exception of the south side that doesn't?
The walkway?
Right.
And I believe it doesn't wrap around the west side of the building. That is landscaped instead.
So which way are we facing here?
It's facing north.
This is north?
Yeah, that's the north side.
Okay, are we ready for a motion?
I have one other question.
Oh, sure.
In the northwest corner, it shows what's depicted as a Keystone Black wall. Is that strictly ornamental or does it serve any purpose?
I'm sorry?
The Keystone Black wall in the northwest corner, ornamental? Very good.
Are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move that we approve final site plan on PC 2380-1220 with the comments in the McKenna report and of course, the engineering items that need to be taken care of.
Supported. Move by Commissioner Pratt in support of Commissioner Ostendorf to grant final site plan approval to application 2380-1220. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, good luck to you. She brought success. Okay, we have the planning and zoning monthly report. Any comments, concerns, questions on that? Oh, did you, I'm sorry, I was reading your reporting yet. It was so interesting.
If I could just add that Supervisor Heisey, I have discussed with him, you know, having a joint meeting with the planning commission and he is interested and would like to look at August for such a meeting, the end of August.
Okay, good. Happy to hear that.
A joint meeting with the board of trustees.
Do we have an update on the Ridge Road condo development, North Ridge?
Yes, so we, we understand that the applicant is trying to reach out to the homeowners associations and they would like to come back before this planning commission at the June meeting. I believe that's June 17th or 19th. So we have not seen, June 16th, we have not seen revised plans or, they haven't submitted anything new.
Have they done their traffic study, do you know?
I, I do not, we haven't received.
So I don't know if they're going to get, I mean, appreciate that they're doing that, reaching out to HOAs, but that's kind of out of the scope of an HOA board to speak on behalf of the neighborhood for, for this kind of a thing. So I'm not sure they're going to get the quality of input that they are hoping for and just my comment.
Yeah, they might be, I don't know what extent we can suggest to them on how to approach this, but I think if they talk to the adjacent property owners, those people would have probably the most input. I mean, everyone in the subdivision does, but those are the people that have a direct impact.
Yeah, and I, I think.
Yeah, and I think the last time they spoke, they meet with the HOAs, John, or was it just you were there?
Maybe two members of two HOAs here.
Yeah, and I mean...
And that was when they, and that's when they presented the plan.
It's, that's right, that's what they did. It's not, and it's not to criticize HOAs, and we have one, they do a terrific job, but they wouldn't, they don't really speak for the neighborhood when it comes to, you know, this kind of thing. And I think that's where they can get kind of twisted up.
Well, hopefully they'll realize that. I'm sorry, Bob.
No, I'm sorry, I kind of have a question about, this is the planning and zoning active projects under the Purcell place. Laura, you put out an update that said that it was approved with the conditions of a $20,000 donation to township ADC to be made during the site development plan. What does that mean?
So for the Purcell property, instead of doing a gazebo or another community amenity, they have proposed to do a historic marker and work with the Historic Commission on erecting that on the property itself, and then to pay into the Historic District Fund for future historic investment projects to the township of $20,000. So that would be a specific line item in the budget that the Historic District Commission could utilize.
And this is because, I mean, I'm just, I don't remember the conversation. Why did the trustees ask for this? I don't understand.
Well, actually, I proposed that, you know, so...
I was gonna say that was it, no, you weren't here, were you?
Yeah, I don't think you were.
I wasn't here.
You were at that meeting. So, you know, they had some problems, they were gonna, they talked about a gazebo, they talked about a fire pit, they talked about just a passive park space with a couple benches. The problem was where they were gonna locate it is, there is quite an elevation difference. And they worked on trying to get it to be handicapped accessible, and it wasn't possible to do that. So then that discussion, I was thinking about this, well, we always think, you know, it's a relatively small development, so we're gonna have them do something for just those residents. But basically, why not do it for the community? It would have more impact. So the Historical District, of course, you know, did not receive any money from the township. They want to, oh, they want to put up some historical signs around, they're still playing around with that. And they also want to do a brochure, sort of a drive-around brochure about where are some of the historical sites. So the $20,000 would go into, be specified specifically for those kinds of activities. And they have agreed, the applicant has agreed, to place a historical sign on the property.
It's fine, Dennis, as long as, I didn't understand it. You orchestrated, I wasn't here, that's on me, okay? I just wanted to make sure it made sense, it makes sense to me now.
But now that you have the floor, I know there were a couple of items you wanted to discuss, and maybe this might be an appropriate time. This is sort of just an open...
If I could just go back to that real quick.
Sure.
So if you get a chance, go, watch the Board of Trustees meeting in this particular section, because it was actually a five-to-two vote. And Mark Clinton made some interesting points about the fact that the purpose, the intent of the cluster housing option is what, preserve natural features or amenities, and it seems like maybe it's being used by developers to, you know, get more houses, houses in than they would otherwise be entitled to. So it was, it was not a clear approval, and you might want to go watch it and just look at the comments.
Well, I didn't, I mean, I wasn't here, but at least I know that it was orchestrated here, that's what, I just didn't understand it.
Yeah, no.
And Bob, to that, you know, I would agree with that. I get sometimes very frustrated about them coming in, and they put something in for a few thousand dollars, let's say, and they gain a number of homes, you know, on that. We've been hearing this from the, you know, the North Ridge development people there too, you know. I'm not sure, you know, how we can handle that, that's, that's...
Well, that leads me to one of my concerns, which is, which is the development across from the picnic basket. What I understand, and I could be wrong, so please correct me, is that, I guess, Pulte bought that from somebody else that we approved. They put that development in. It is totally not consistent with what this planning commission is trying to do. I mean, you got a big hole right next to the street, there's very little green space there, there's no trees there, and the houses are already sold out. And I guess what I'm asking, and I don't know how to do this, but I think when a developer sells another developer, it really needs to come back before this commission one more time. And we need to put some kind of meat and potatoes on the table to make that happen. I don't know how we do that. But that's, if we're gonna have any function at all, it's gotta be to keep stuff like that from happening. Because if you drive down that road, you got beautiful developments on left side, the right side, every other side, and then you got this big hole in the ground with these five houses that are sticking out like a sore thumb, that Pulte did, right across from the picnic basket. It just isn't consistent with, I think, what we're trying to do.
Bob, I thank you for raising that issue up. I raised it up with Laura as well. You know, I was completely unaware that, you know, they sold that property. Those homes do not look anything like the elevations that were presented to us by the original developer. And I question, what is the internal process within the township? When there is a sale like that, how do we know, is there someone going back to look to see, do these elevations look similar, the style, you know? We're not gonna dictate exactly everything, but there's a certain look to it. And those Pulte homes do not look like what we had approved.
I mean, it's totally inconsistent with that whole venue out there on Plymouth Road.
Can we require that if the developer, if the approval is based on that it's for that developer, and if it's sold, they have to come back for another approval?
How do we do that?
Yeah, it could be a condition. You know, the other, I think, big piece is that if the, yeah, currently how the township ordinances are written for the cluster housing, if it's not working for the township, then, you know, your best bet is to really change the ordinance, because that is what, you know, we legally have to operate under. So if there's a provision in there that stipulates a change of ownership requires re-review by the commission, that's legally binding. If there is a condition that X amount of open space must be preserved, then that's legally binding and not open for interpretation.
Good.
So what do we need to do, Laura, to try to put some caveat in to make sure that we get a second look at that? How do we make that happen?
We can't make that a condition currently. Do we have to change the ordinance?
Well, can we make a recommendation to the trustees, the ordinance been changed?
Well, they will have to.
Sure. Go for a vote from whom?
To the constituency, I mean, everybody?
No, not at all. No, I mean, the ordinances, you know, are living, because sometimes they change as conditions change. And we've done that, you know, a number of times over the years, it's changed ordinances because they were just not, whatever the condition that didn't anticipate it, but I think that's really valid. I'd be happy to take that forward.
So can, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, can we put in the minutes today that we, we can vote on this, but that we would like to see that happen, so that we have a chance to make sure we can preserve what we worked so hard to try to do? Because one big developer comes in, and you know, the thing that frustrates me, and it's not Joe Bag of Donuts, it's Pulte. They could have done whatever if they had come back before here. They could have put 62 50-foot trees in there, we had asked them.
Yeah.
To make it happen. And the fact that the property, I think there's six houses maybe in there, they're all sold out.
Yeah.
Well, there's more than six houses in there.
Well, whatever it is, but there's enough in there to justify, to justify...
Because it goes, it goes all the way back.
And I didn't have the heart to drive back there. I just drove by about 16 times.
Yeah.
But...
And just so you know, the original developer ran into some serious problems with their, with the state, because they killed a bunch of the, the... Wet, wet...
The wetlands.
Wetlands in the back of that property, when they buried it, really. And, and so, but that's, what's that guy's name, Anderson, something like that?
Randazzo.
Randazzo, yeah, so, that's, I think that's why he got out of the thing and went to, but I don't disagree with you. I think, and, and I did watch the seventh meeting, and I think that's important to do when they're acting on things that we're suggesting. Because some of the comments that were made are valid, and especially with the cluster housing situation. We've had some issues with that, well, we have that, quite honestly, from my perspective. We had that same issue, an issue similar to the one on North Territorial. We had on, the one on Beck, Verona or whatever the hell that's called.
Right there, yeah, which is still apparent, it's still apparent.
They didn't provide any...
It's going against the spirit of the cluster housing.
Right, and so I think, I think we need to concern ourselves with that kind of, kind of issue, and, and put some, give us some ability to put some teeth into it.
I wanted to back up, back up just a little bit in terms of the cluster housing option. This has been one of my pet peeves, is that this preservation of natural features is just baloney. Not that it's what it should be, but they're cramming more houses in, and that's all there is to it, you know? And, and that's why we have to be careful about even the rezoning things. It's all an attempt to cram more houses in. And that, that just isn't, isn't right. And, you know, I think there, there has to be a lot more emphasis based on the preservation of natural features. And, you know, that, that just isn't happening.
I have occasion regularly to drive down Eight Mile in Northville, and all those developments out to Napier Road. And they're older, of course, but they've done such a good job in preserving nature. Across from Mayberry Park, such a good job preserving nature out there. And I see the Pulte development across from the picnic basket, the thing on Beck Road, okay, is obstinate to that. It's just the opposite of where I think we want to be. Because the developments that we'd like to have are gonna attract more people if done right. And especially when you got a big developer, and plus, we all know right now that properties are the premium, so people are gonna pay above list, so it's not like there's no money to be made.
Yeah.
There's no money, they just need to put something back into the community.
Bob, you mentioned the Purcell property, five-to-two vote. Wasn't that the same number on the Margate, same issues?
Yeah.
Same meeting?
And it was almost four to three, except I wasn't gonna, I wasn't gonna vote opposite of what I did here. I wasn't throwing, I wasn't gonna throw you all under the bus, you're welcome. No, it's not throwing somebody under the bus. I just think it's a good point. We gotta look at the cluster housing option.
So can we put something in our minutes to reflect that, Laura? How do we do that? Need to make a motion, Chairman?
Well, let me ask Laura this question. So I want to make sure I understand what she suggested or an approach. And that is that you're suggesting the ordinance be modified to, you know, require the developer to come back in. But can't the commission do that, say, make that a condition of their approval? Of course, it would be subject by the final approval by the Board of Trustees. So I guess we don't have complete control, you know, that rests with the Board of Trustees. But if it's an ordinance, then they're obligated.
So wouldn't it be as simple as the contract is binding on the successors and assigns?
Could that be for every development, like even the...
It should be, because you could come in, I could come in here and pitch...
Like the property for tonight, right?
A development, and we approve it, and then I sell it to somebody else, and they, they change it all, and they don't come back.
And the other thing, Bob, that has happened is that we approve building materials, and then when that building goes up, it's not the same thing.
Same.
And that upsets me, because, you know, we spend a lot of time looking at this and discussing it, and then it's not what we approved.
And then if it's in the contract, then, you know, the successor is gonna be aware of it, because they'll see the contract, and they can't, they can't get around it. They have to come back.
Who's the enforcement in that, Bob?
So there would have to be the planning department, correct? Would be the enforcement body.
It would be the township.
Yeah, I mean, the township, but within the township, would be the planning department.
You mean Construction Department, right? Office of the Chief Building Official, isn't that?
Yeah.
We have a new announcement with a new Chief Building Official, right?
Yeah. I think it says of June 1st, right? Yeah.
Number one's gone, number two steps up.
Number what?
The number one mark is gone.
Yeah.
And Ken McDonald steps up to the...
Yeah.
Right.
So do we put this in a form of motion, Laura, or how do we handle this?
It depends how the planning commission would like to proceed. I mean, you could recommend that there are, you know, stipulations added to the contract in the future. And however, the ordinance is really the legal binding document and what, you know, falls back on should anything be litigated. So if, if the commission really wants to see something set in stone, then I would recommend it's permanently added to the ordinance.
Yeah, that's where I would go to.
So should we communicate this directly to the, to the supervisor, send them a letter, or, you know, putting it in the minutes is one thing, but how do, you know, does he read the minutes every time? You know, I don't know, how do we get it moved up so there's more visibility?
More accountability.
And accountability.
And it could be something that is sent from, you know, yourself as chair of the commission, or, you know, as liaison to the Board of Trustees, it could also be brought up that way.
Well, when we, when we go to change the ordinance, we usually give you what our thoughts are that we want to change, and you give us new verbiage in that to affect that. Is that not true?
Yeah, that's how we have, like, approached the rear yard stepbacks that came before the ZBA and then...
And the fence, and the, so that's what I'm suggesting, is that we need to put it in the ordinance. And that means that not only do we approve the, do we can create an ordinance change, but then it goes to the trustees for their approval. And, and I think that's, I think that's something that, and perhaps we should be, well, one item that Bob mentioned was the change of owners of the property. And the other item, I think somehow we need to, to make stricter the, the...
Cluster?
The cluster housing situation providing reason for the cluster housing being even considered.
Well, we had those statements of fact from when we did the Purcell, remember?
What are the criteria again for, do you know off the top of your head?
There are several in there, but the language is, you know, very discretionary. So providing, I would say, some more teeth to the ordinance.
That's what I'm saying, so that, so that, you know, we, we don't have these issues. And we brought, we bring, because, was that place across the way from, out there on Ann Arbor Road? Is that, is that a cluster housing?
The woods?
Yeah.
Yes, across from Pioneer?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
No, no, not across from Pioneer.
Big dick.
The, the one that he was talking about across from.
Oh, Andover Forest?
Yeah.
Yes, that was.
That was, I thought that was a cluster housing, too.
In 2013.
Yeah.
But, but the density, when you look at the overall, it's one plus acre per home.
So, I, I think, my, my feeling is, is that I don't think we need a, is everyone in agreement that we need to do something in the ordinance for those items, and if that's the case, then we'll, we can put you to, to work to, to come up with something, some additional, maybe there's others around that have these things that we can help the ordinance be more restrictive.
More meat in it, more.
Yeah, more meat in it to, to have it.
The ordinance just says preserve natural features, or it's not feasible to develop the property in a conventional way. It does not say cram more buildings on it.
Right, yeah.
So, I mean, I would look at the, the, in the instance of a, a cluster housing option, is it the same number of buildings, they're just tighter together and preserving the natural features, or is it an increase in the number of buildings? And I, I don't see any, anything in the ordinance that says, oh, if you want to cram more buildings on there, that, that, that's a clever approach, is to use the CHO.
Laura, do you know offhand, do other communities have a similar provisions in their ordinance that we've been talking about here?
In my experience, they're more strict, more definitive, so either you're meeting this criteria or you're not.
I think with the ordinance as it is, it's hard to say no, and applicants keep coming back and keep coming back and trying new ideas, and they don't quite work, or it's not accessible, handicapped accessible, there's always a reason, but we're still at the table having the discussion. So I think we do need to have more teeth, more to, in my opinion, like, a lot of these applications, it's hard to deny, because they are trying to come up with solutions to qualify as a cluster housing option, but we just don't seem to have enough, I guess, enough teeth to make a denial, or really to, to deny, I think. What do you guys think?
Well, I think, if I'm, if, if I'm not mistaken, and if I am, Laura, tell me, you know, on the Andover Forest, they did preserve, I think, about 10 acres of forest, there, there's a conservatory for it. So if they had came in and wanted to develop it in a traditional way, I don't think that that forest would have been preserved. Am I correct in that understanding?
I wasn't here when the original plan was approved, right? But I do believe there are, there are wetlands on that site, so, you know, those, if those were ever to be built upon, it depends on, you know, their size and, and type, and if they could be mitigated or not, so I'm not sure if they could have built over the entire site.
Well, natural assets, parcels peculiar, peculiar configuration, parcels particular relationship to the thoroughfare or collector rolls, road, sorry, particular relationship to a limited access highway. Gotta meet one of those four, right?
I think one of the ways to minimize this situation is you have a parallel plan, and if the parallel plan has, under, without the option, actually has fewer houses, then I, I would be negative on the CHO. You know, in other words, that shouldn't be a, a device to get more houses. I can understand where people don't want a whole lot of yard, and they want surrounding vegetation and, and natural woods, that's, that's really what it's about. But if you're getting more buildings, or more lots, by using the cluster option, I think we should reject those.
Well, you think about Margate, what was preserved there? There's, there weren't.
Nothing, right?
There weren't really any trees, the trees that were there around where they're gonna put the detention pond, it's pretty much scrubby stuff, I mean, there was no grand oaks, or, you know, anything else, I mean, not that I'm saying let's tear everything down, but there really was a minimal amount to try to preserve, but they were able to get the cluster housing.
So one of the ways to kind of make this expedient in the short term is that, because it's up to the Planning Commission to, you know, to make the first determination as to whether it's in conformity with the spirit and, and intent, and the applicant has got to make their case based on one of these four criteria, and it's up to us to do the initial assessment, and we, we say yea or nay based on, do they make their case?
But in this case, it didn't, the issue become, it, the developer changed, and we didn't get a chance to look at the second option.
Which one?
The, the one I'm talking about, the, across from.
The Andover Forest.
Yeah, that was a different, that's a different, different.
Two separate issues.
Issue.
That, Andover's going back a long time, because the state shut them down for at least a couple of years.
Yeah, it's been going on for a while.
It's probably five or six.
Well, 2013 is when they got, so look at it, 2013 is when they first, maybe they showed up first in 2012, and it took that long to get through the approval process. Well, I don't know, Laura, if it's appropriate for you to discuss this with the supervisor and say, you know, this, you know, relate to him our thoughts, or do we want to put something in writing, or?
Or should we try to check a few of the surrounding communities like Northville, and see what their ordinance is saying?
I would like to see that.
And see how they put meeting on this, so we can maybe mimic those.
How we stack up with surrounding communities, I mean, we did that for the rear yard setback.
So, I think, yeah, that would be, that would be helpful, I think it would be, I think it might be a little bit of a wrestling match, because, again, if, we're, we're kind of the do not pass go, I mean, we could always recommend denial, and the Board of Trustees could overrule us, but if they don't make their case to us, based on one or more of these criteria, and we don't agree with that, you know, then I think it's more difficult for the Board of Trustees to overrule it, because it was, it was five to two vote, so, so there were five people that didn't necessarily agree, at least in these two particular examples. Might be a bit of a wrestling match, but one.
But I think if the message comes.
But that's my job to do the wrestling, right?
If the message comes from us.
Right.
I think so, Bob, I think so.
That's why they pay me all that money.
Easy for the board to go with us, whichever way we go.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Well, I think that's why it's important to have a meeting with them, so, see, what do we have a shared vision, because that's, we don't always have to agree, you know, with each other, but we have to share the broader picture.
Right.
Right, and I'm, like, I know it's been brought up before in the cluster housing options, that when an applicant doesn't have something really to preserve, it still gives the Planning Commission the opportunity to put in provisions for additional landscaping or additional buffering, like, we do have additional controls, that if they just developed the, the property as is, they wouldn't have to put in a buffer, or they wouldn't have to move their houses further away from the neighbors, so there are some pluses to the cluster housing option that we can't forget.
Yeah, and you're right.
That the neighbors do, we can do more to help the neighbors sometimes with it, even if we can't preserve something, so that's the, kind of the tough spot we're in.
Through the cluster housing option, we have some leverage that we might not otherwise have, and that's in.
So there's value in that as well.
We talked about that a little bit in the last meeting, sorry, Kendra?
Oh, just, there's value in that as well, even if there's nothing to preserve, we can do more for adjacent properties, but it puts us in a tough position if we're trying to abide by this, and it doesn't really fit, but we do want to help the neighbors.
I think there's a couple of things that impact on why there's this big pressure on cluster housing applications, because first of all, the cost of construction is so high now. I mean, if they're gonna put in the infrastructure down a thousand-foot road, let's say, it's gonna, and, and they put, according to whatever the ordinance is, they can put 20 homes, but if they go for cluster housing, and now they can put 40, well, they've just reduced their costs, because you're still gonna have to pay, you know, the infrastructure to put, put that down, plus, there's so much demand to live in Plymouth, thankfully, we're grateful for that, and because past administrations and planning commissions have worked hard to preserve the open spaces and careful planning, we don't want to destroy that now, and we're at the tail end of our development phase.
Right, and, I mean, to that point, there's a certain number at which it becomes economically viable to move forward with the project, however, I would argue that if that land, that parcel of land is for sale for, say, a million dollars, and that element of the cost goes directly to the viability of the project, maybe that land really isn't worth a million dollars, because it's only worth a million dollars if they can have, you know, 10 homes on it instead of six that they would otherwise be able to do.
Right.
So maybe it's overinflated the value of that land, not, not to pick out any particular example that's in front of us.
With more and more, like, smaller properties, being with one house on it, and I don't see this problem going away.
Not in, not in the short term. I mean, it, it's amazing to me, housing prices were in the, in the tank in '08, now all of a sudden, it's gangbusters.
No, good time to sell, but you gotta live some.
Right, exactly.
Maybe.
We had a place to go.
Maybe we capitalize on that, though, and maybe the fact that there is so much interest in development, and there, and interest rates are so low, maybe that's the time for us to draw a line in the sand, because there, there's gonna be more innovation around that. It'd be different if we were here struggling, and the economy was dead, and everything was going a different way like it was 20 years ago or 15 years ago, and maybe now's the time to say, okay, to protect the viability of this community and what we've worked to achieve, including, you know, the future value of it, we're gonna have to draw a line in the sand here and say there are certain things that we're not going to endorse as a Planning Commission, we're gonna ask the trustees to support, so that we can protect the future. I mean, to me, this is the future of this community, is, is protecting these spaces. I don't, and I'm just, I know I'm, I'm kind of beating a dead horse, but I don't see how you can fix a development across from.
Oh, yeah.
From the picnic basket, I just don't see it, I mean, I just don't see it, and, I mean, so, the, the kind of like, the gates open and the horses are out, and putting them back in is too late, and so maybe now is the time for going forward to make sure there's a little bit of substance in the ordinance, or at least in our endorsement of the ordinance, and, and see if we can't get the trustees to go with us and say, okay, you know, let's take a step forward, but let's, don't take three steps forward and forget why we're here, I think that's what I see.
But I think it's also a function of, we're almost fully developed in the township, and as less and less property becomes available, it's just an inherent problem of, they're trying to push in more into less, and.
Not going away.
We can expect a lot of that.
Thank you for the opportunity, Dennis.
What those houses sell for, do you know?
I don't know, I, I, I'm gonna go find out tomorrow, though.
I think they're.
They say in the sevens.
I think they're in the sevens, too.
They're in the seven?
Yeah. And, and, and they're devoid of trees, and they just don't reflect what our community looks like.
Take two at that price.
The second thing I wanted to bring up, is that we want to move on, is, and I don't, this is a question, and it's more of a put it on the agenda thing, but I, I wonder how we can interface with Wayne County, so that the roads and the stop signs and everything in our community reflect the need of the community more than what Wayne County thinks they do, who was never here. I can give you like, four examples, okay? I mean, the speed limit on, on Plymouth Road, Ann Arbor Road, from Beck going, going west is 55 miles an hour, through Colony Farms, through all that.
Right.
There's a bunch of hills, I had an accident there about a year and a half ago, I've seen three accidents since then. I don't, I don't understand why we can't hold, do more to support our community, and that should be a 45-minute mile mile speed limit, not a 55. They come over that hill, you can't see them, you, I mean, I'm in a truck, and I still can't look down the hill, okay? So how do we, and, and I can give you two traffic lights that have the same issues, how do we hold them more accountable to reflect what we're trying to do in our community, instead of them making decisions however they make them, and we have any vehicle to support those decisions, so they really reflect the continuity of the community that we're trying to plan for, okay? I mean, I just don't, I don't, I, I just don't know how that works, so I'm asking the question, how do we hold them to our standards instead of their standards?
Laura, do you have an answer for that? I sure don't.
That's a tough question.
Yeah, it is, but one that needs to be asked.
It's, it's, it's continuous, it's, it's, it's part of, it's part of that whole equation, it's part of, you know, running by that Pulte development at 55 miles an hour, and, and going to Washington County, and, and realizing that, hell, this is not a 55 mile an hour speed limit, there's a bunch of houses in here, and are going the other way, you know, down towards Beck, and having the same question, and then you have this whole question of stoplights and turn signals and, and all that, that don't reflect the needs of the community. I mean, I, I just wonder how we get them tuned in to what we're trying to do to make a better community, safer community, a more robust community, a, a, a more vibrant community, instead of just.
That question is a little different, because that's actually a state road, and so that's under the state's jurisdiction, and they've got volumes of regulations as to when the speed limit should be what, and where the stoplights go, and everything else. I think, I don't know if you've ever had to deal with some of that stuff with the state?
With MDOT.
I suspect on the speed limit issue, too, if we have a, an area that it's not traveling the speed limit, but traveling over the speed limit, and our own police can have no, no tolerance for going over the speed limit, you know, and start stopping people, and that is a big, big factor, because, you know, so it's 55, and they're, they're not, people who are having trouble are not going 55, they're going 65, 70, and if they're at 56, and they're gonna get a, a ticket, that'll get, get around.
I've seen police, they, they seem to observe Beck Road frequently, because I was with my crews.
Yeah, they do.
And Powell Road is another one. I've never seen anybody stopped on, on Ann Arbor Road.
You know, to ask the same question a little bit differently, we had a big problem in the township at Ann Arbor Road in McClumpa, and we were able to get that remedied.
Yeah.
How, how exactly did that come about, do you know, Bob?
So, there's traffic study, that took two years or so, took a lot of pressure from that.
Longer than that.
Longer than that.
Yeah.
Since there was a tragedy at that corner a few years earlier.
And I think that's the only reason it actually happened.
Yeah.
Didn't the supervisor get really involved in that?
Yeah, he got, he, he got really involved in it.
So, let me just ask the perfunctory, like, structural question, what I'm hearing, and I could be wrong, is that generally, MDOT or Wayne County decides, and we live with what they decide for our roads. and we live with what they decide for our roads.
Well, they have, I mean, yeah, I guess so. Because they own them.
That's pretty much it.
See, I think.
You got it.
I think that's putting the cart in front of the horse. I mean, I really think there needs to be a vehicle and maybe we could lean on the Board of Trustees or the supervisor to say, okay, we want more control of our community. We're planning it, we're orchestrating it, we're doing this and we need, we need a vehicle into your organization that reflects the value system we're trying to impart in this community, period. I don't know what that is. I just think we need to figure out a way to do that because otherwise it's kind of like the wild, wild west.
And when does the county or the state have an interest in giving us more authority and them less? You know, so I mean, that's.
I understand that, okay? But the squeaky wheel gets the, gets the oil. I mean, I just think it's time to ask that question again. Especially if you look at, like, even the development on the, on the community line between our township and Northville, that whole five-mile corridor, okay? I mean, that, there's huge regulatory issues there. There's huge developmental issues there. There's huge traffic issues there. And so some, I'm going to let some engineer in Wayne County make that decision superficially and defer, you know, here we are trying to get the Buddy's Pizza and get this and get that and do everything else. And they're, and nobody's taking care of the vehicle, the vehicular traffic to get us there or doing it the right way. I just think it's, it's a huge part of the equation that's missing. And I don't know how to get that done, but I think it needs to be done. And I'm not sure this is the right vehicle to do it. I'm just Joe Bagadonas taxpayer, okay? And I just don't like what I see when it comes to that kind of stuff. And I think, you know, somebody's got to start that process with Wayne County.
Never heard that expression before, Joe Bagadonas.
Oh, yeah.
That's my favorite expression.
You can order that at Mo's Southwest Grill, the Joey Bagadonas.
They have a Joe Bagadonas.
They do.
So I think I'll do that. But I don't know, or I just, I just think, I don't know, Bob, you'd sit on the Board of Trustees. I just think there's got to be a way to elevate this whole communal traffic issue and tie it in somehow to the community more and not let some engineer sitting in an office building somewhere who comes out for 15 minutes do a study and tell us what it is.
You know, I think this is a good topic to bring up when we have our joint meeting with the Board of Trustees.
It is.
I'm done. I'm done, Dennis.
Covered all the.
Those are my two favorite.
They shed some light on activities that are, you know, in flight. That would be, that would be a really good topic.
I think we've got a couple of really, or a few good topics to have that meeting with the trustees.
We should probably think about agenda topics for that meeting and then also ask the Board of Trustees and the supervisor what they would like to talk about and set some discussion topics once we get into the room. So maybe everyone can be thinking about that. And, you know, we've got a couple more months to reach an agreement on what prioritize what we do want to talk to them about or they want to talk to us about. Any other comments, concerns from the commission?
Sorry for dominating that last.
No, that's very good.
I guess I do have something that we, Dennis and I and Laura were talking about, looking at the minutes. What are your thoughts on how descriptive they are?
I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, looking at the minutes, there's a lot more detail.
Oh, yes, that's very interesting, isn't it?
Yes, so what are your thoughts?
So Alice retired and there's a new person doing the minutes. And she went into considerable detail. I personally like it. She did the same for the Board of Trustees. And I think Jerry's working with her to maybe be a little bit more summary level in some of the areas. Because she was very diligent and, you know, but that's why they're going into detail. I don't know, what are your thoughts?
I'm interested in what the commission thinks.
Who is the new person, Bob?
Denise.
What's her name again?
Denise Terrell.
Did she transcribe from the video? Is that what she's doing?
She's spending a lot of time on it. She's putting a lot of effort into it.
But do we expect her to show up at meetings like Alice in the future?
I was surprised she wasn't here tonight. Because Alice would usually, would be at these meetings, right? I don't know why. She's going to have to watch it and transcribe it. But the only thing about it is that you run the risk of errors. And so you really got to read them if you're going to have that level of detail. Because, you know, Dennis said this and he says, wait a minute, I never said that.
What else, comments?
Well, I don't know. I'll ask Laura again. Laura, do you have any comment on how other communities do it?
It does vary. Some communities are just as detailed, others are more general. I think I shared the MSU extension resource about, you know, the importance of taking minutes to meet Robert's rules and to really focus on the actions of the body and what those motions are is most important. You have some discretion regarding the other comments.
Did you send that out to all the commissioners?
I think it might have just been you and Kendra.
Okay, I'll forward that on to the rest of the commissioners.
I think there was something from MTA as well. And maybe in the annual meeting, they had some discussion about that. Because you can, you can do it as detailed as you want, but it's, what was the action taken and how was voted? We had a big controversy several years ago when members of the public couldn't get their, they couldn't even get acknowledged that they made a comment. Remember that?
When the issue was raised. I think it's most important to put an item that really results in the action.
Is that a merit?
Certain things that it's subject to this. And that's why I always think it's good when you make a motion subject to the provisions of the planning report. Because everything is there, that's a complete report. If somebody decided to litigate something in the future, you have the document there. You're not depending on minutes. You have something written down and maybe the commission, so, you know, Laura might put something, well, it's, the commission needs to discuss this particular item and they have the discretion to do this or do that. Well, then we need to put in the, in the minutes that this is what the commission decided because that was an open-ended decision. You know, she didn't recommend anything. She said they can do this or that.
What are thoughts as far as the public hearings and having names and addresses next to comments?
So technically, they don't have to give their address. It's completely voluntary. So you're saying, what's the, they've already given it.
But do we want it in the minutes?
Yeah, that might be a little bit too much. I'm just looking at them right now.
I don't know what the value added is to have the address unless it, again, if it was someone that was buddying up to a particular property.
It sort of gives context to their interest in it. But they ask for their name and, for their name and address, but you don't, you're not required to give your address.
They probably don't know that, though.
I know.
Or probably aren't expecting it to be in a document like this. I guess I'm looking for feedback because I work with Laura on, after.
You'd like to see them scout that.
They're written, then Laura and I review them and go back and forth before they come to the commission, so.
Well, do you want to forward that document that Laura sent us to the commission?
Yeah.
And ask them to read it? And then if you have additional thoughts, just let Kendra know.
Yeah, because I guess what I'm looking for is like, if we want names, addresses with comments, like this much detail? Or do we want, and then do we want summaries of what people said in general, what their concerns were? I guess really the level of detail is, and also for the commissioner comments. Do we want it to read like a script? Or do we want a summary paragraph saying the commission was concerned about A, B, C, and D? Or do you want it to say Commissioner, you know, Dorsevitz was concerned with this item and Pratt with this item? Like, do we want it that detailed?
From my perspective, only my perspective, I think like the comments that Bob had mentioned today, that those should be in the minutes. You know, so he was concerned about, you know, change of ownership in a development. He was concerned about relationships with Wayne County roads. Those should, you know, they could just be a couple of sentences, not the whole script about, you know, what we talked about. But if someone like, let's say, Bill is asking, well, what happened to this particular, what's the status of this particular development? I don't know if that needs to be in the minutes. That was just an inquiry.
Well, that's a tough one. You'd rather see them a little bit more high level? A little more summary?
I think for me, that's, that's the way I would look at it. I think, you know, bringing it up to summaries probably is, is, is good. I think the motions need to be exactly the way they were.
Done.
Presented.
Yeah.
Right.
I think for legal reasons, too.
Yeah.
Well, there was one incident, I don't know, Kendra, if you might recall this, but the property that is on the southeast corner of North Territorial and Ridge, remember there was going to be a daycare center there? And there was going to be buffering. We were requiring the buffering and the developer litigated the thing. And then the judge came back, looked at the minutes. And there was discussion about traffic. And I think the judge felt that, that we based it on traffic and we didn't. It was on the, it was on the buffering, you know, the many feet and all of that business. And remanded it back to us to look at it. Now, had the minutes been a little more reflective and say, well, we're turning it down because of this? But the minutes never reflected that. So we had to discuss it again, know new information, and then make the motion that said the reason is because of the buffering, not the traffic.
Right.
So there's an example where you need it, again, why did we take a particular action?
And I see that definitely for like, for the actual motion and maybe a summary beforehand. But, I mean, there are a lot of, there's a lot of commentary that I don't know if we need to have recorded.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think it would be helpful to get your comments back to Jerry Vorva. Because he's, it came up at the end of the Board of Trustees meeting. Somebody brought it, brought up the same issue. And he said he was working with her to, you know.
Just have guidelines, because it's a lot of work to do this. And then if we're going to X things out or change it.
Yeah, no, I think you should, I think you should, you know, provide some comments to Jerry and I think he'll work with her to kind of try to streamline them a little bit.
Yeah, I give her a lot of credit because it takes a lot of work.
Oh, she worked hard.
To do this. So there's no disparity, you know, on her efforts, I give her a lot of credit for it. But the question is, you know, do we need to go through all that effort?
Do we want it?
Right.
Yeah, it's well taken.
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns?
No, I've been by it lately. Did they tear down the Denny's? Because the comment in our report says they're going to do it in April.
That's what we were told. They continue, every month, they're going to do it the next month.
I just wondered.
No, it still remains as is.
Yeah, okay.
That's the car wash?
Yeah, car wash, yeah.
Anything else, anything? Is our motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Seconded.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt, supported by Commissioner Wilson Dorff to adjourn the meeting at 8:44. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, adjourn.